Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Kim, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Present.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Pollan?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone this evening. It's a nice crowd for us, summer evening. All right. Item 2.01 is an information presentation on student access to technology. Looks like we have several presenters.
Well, thank you for letting us present this tonight. We're very excited to be at this point in the process. You know, it's hard to believe that it was almost a year ago that our taxpayers and our patrons approved the bond issue and $10 million of that bond was specifically set aside to increase student access. And even before that bond passed, technology had already started to put together a strategic plan, so to speak, to really get as many people and stakeholders involved in that process as we could, to really assist us in making the right decision with the types of technologies that we wanted that were not only sustainable but also functional. We didn't want to just go out and buy hardware to be buying hardware. We really wanted to transform our classrooms at all grade levels into creative and collaborative spaces that no student would really want to leave. As you heard in December of 2013, we made a presentation to the board on the TAPS plans and our proof of concepts. And then again, it was written in the technology plan that you approved in last month about all the data that we've been gathering and the devices that we've been investigating, learning from the teachers that you're going to hear from tonight, and finally, to just get to the point where we could make a decision. So, we have a proposal that we are bringing forward to you. You saw it in a future action item that's on the agenda tonight. But before we do that, I would like for you to just sit back and enjoy.
Well, as you know, our district's classrooms are already well-equipped with digital classroom technology for instructional purposes by our teachers. And so, the next step has then been to involve and gather input from our teachers as to what types of technology would best support instructional and curricular goals for our students. And through our TAPS teachers' involvement in a proof-of-concept phase this semester, we've been able to make significant progress in that regard. We've had over 60 teachers involved at all levels in all curricular areas, involved in the process, and tonight, we'd like to take a few minutes to share with you the excitement that is really growing in our district due to increasing technology for students in these And so, here's a sneak peek into several of our classrooms involved in the process this semester.
When I call your name, I need you to get an office. My name's Amanda Ady, and I teach second grade here at Fairview. We are getting ready to start our end-of-the-year math assessment, so today, we were using iPads to review some of the concepts that we've learned throughout the year, just to get them extra-ready for the test. What we're using today was an app called Mimeo Mobile, and that's actually an app that's connected to the Mimeo that I have in my classroom. Within that app, I have the chance to send students things like today, I would send them questions that goes to each of the iPads, and then when they get that, within that question, they have the chance to circle their answers, they can highlight it, they can move things around, so they can manipulate it however they need to. I can also send them quizzes through there. One of the other things that I really like is that I can also freeze their iPads, that way I can pull their attention back in, so they're focused on me and we can have a conversation, especially if we need to troubleshoot something. It's really helpful for them. It's given me the opportunity to just bring something different to my classroom that I've never had before. I've been able to plan lessons that really speak to my students and really get them engaged. You know, I feel like being able to teach with iPads, I feel like I'm actually just teaching in another world than what I've done before. I feel like, for once, I'm getting to present an education to my kids that is just like the world around them.
Well, it increases engagement in a huge way. All of my students are incredibly engaged whenever I bring out the iPads, whenever I bring out any piece of technology, they're extremely motivated by that. The biggest thing I've noticed, it makes learning more efficient, students are picking up things a lot quicker, and so that impacts learning in a great way.
It gives them that chance to be interactive with the technology, instead of just looking at it up on the screen, they get to interact with it, they get to manipulate it, especially in math, they get to be so hands-on, and it's in a different way. They're still using manipulatives, but they're using it mixed with technology, so it's a really cool thing to see.
We have done this project before as a, like a cutting and paper and glue project, and sometimes when we've done it that way, I'll get more behaviors or maybe some more non-compliance, but doing it with the technology just gets them way more engaged than I could even dream of doing that, so it just gets, their attending, their participating is way more increased than just doing it with paper and glue.
One of the most exciting things to me about the project is the fact that we have access to anything in the world we want, at our fingertips of that. So, it's just a whole new world of opportunities for experiences for the kids.
I think the SAMR model is important because it allows me to grow as a teacher and just make sure I'm not just replacing tasks that the kids could do, but creating new tasks. And oftentimes, they're able to show me things that they can do that I haven't seen yet, so you can learn from each other that way.
It's something that I look at every day, and you're not able to teach above that line every single day, every single second in that R category, but it's something to strive for, and it has honestly inspired me to set my standards higher for students.
SAMR just gives me the chance to take my teaching to the next level. When I plan lessons with a SAMR model in mind, it definitely keeps pulling me back to how am I going to get my students thinking at a higher level? And being able to collaborate and being able to really have to process through their thinking is definitely what that does for me.
Once you get past doing what you're already doing in the classroom, it becomes a new way of thinking. You're always trying to move up into that, the level of redefinition or modification, and it just, it makes you really imagine and create new things and just look at your lessons completely different.
Because, you know, I've been a teacher for 12 years now, so I have kind of lessons and activities that I've kind of done for years, and so now, using the SAMR model, it just makes me kind of think, how can I change this using more technology? And that we always say, teaching above the line, so it's just, I'm taking some of these lessons that I've had, that I've used for years, and just now incorporating that technology and kind of seeing where I can take it with my students, with the Mimeo or with the iPads and things like that. So, it's just something that I'm constantly thinking about.
Just a reminder, we talked yesterday. I'm Jason Papke, and I teach 7th grade science at Prairie Trail. We're finishing up our heredity unit, and their learning objective is to understand how traits are passed from a parent to an offspring. And we're using three different apps to do that, where the children, students breed frogs or fish together, and the frogs have different color characteristics and design patterns, and then they get to see what the offspring looked like after that offspring is born. And it's very quick. The nice thing is that it takes something that would normally take several weeks or months to do with a plant, and they can find out the next day. What's been really great is immediate feedback. I've been using a website called Exit Ticket, and Exit Ticket allows you to give quizzes in a very quick, efficient manner. It grades it instantly and shows me the feedback right away, so I can do an Exit Ticket quiz at the beginning of the hour over what they were supposed to have read for homework, and I see immediately what kids are scoring high, what kids are scoring low, and what questions are being missed most often, so that I can make sure that I focus on that in my lessons. It's put something in front of me that's requiring me to go and find new ways and new methods to convey and to connect to the kids on a level of what they're used to, which is with phones, tablets, websites, whatever, it's the technology that they're growing up with, and now it's time for us to kind of figure out how to use those things. Instead of avoiding them in the classroom, how do we incorporate a kid's phone or a tablet that they want to be using? How do we incorporate that into the learning? And so, but again, that requires some time to go out and really find new things, and that's what's been fun, because it's amazing how much stuff's out there, but you don't
I was fortunate enough to attend a professional development opportunity about a week ago, and I came away with some new and exciting apps that I've already been able to implement in the classroom. One of the things that the Lathas School District has done so well with introducing the iPads to us was that it put everyone on the same playing field. So, whether you felt comfortable with iPads or not, we all started on the same page, and we just went through basic use of iPads. We also had the opportunity to take those iPads and just work with them ourselves, very hands-on, so we can get used to them before we can give them to our kids.
My biggest fear is that we will get all this amazing but expensive technology, and without professional development, some teachers might become very overwhelmed and might not be able to know how to correctly use all this amazing technology, and so I think that it is one of the most important things when implementing this fully next year. I have been bragging maybe to all my other coworkers who haven't been able to have that technology in their classroom this year, and I'm just so excited for everyone to have the feeling that I've had. It makes teaching so much fun and exciting, and like I said, changes everything that we've done in the past. It makes us really reevaluate the things that we've done in the past and set those standards higher for our students, and I'm excited to spread that with everyone else in our district and for everyone to have the opportunity to feel that way. It makes teaching more fun for me, it makes learning more fun for students, and that's priceless.
I'm most excited to get the technology into students' hands. I think it makes their learning just come alive, and they get really excited about it, even as first graders. They're just so excited to try new things. This morning, I had three students that created a movie about plants using sock puppets, so that was exciting for them as well.
I am most excited about the other educators in our district discovering what you can do with the technology and how it doesn't matter what age the child is or what developmental level they're at, that there are great things that you can do with technology.
When I'm lesson planning and I'm looking at things that I've taught for several years already, I'm looking at it in a brand-new way, and it's so exciting to be able to refresh my thinking and to be able to find new ideas. It's definitely really, really encouraged me and inspired me to be a better teacher and to, for my kids to be able to experience those things too. And I think using the iPads just is innovative. My students are so excited to use them, and I am so excited to present those things and to be able to do that.
Well, as you can see, there's some pretty incredible things that have been happening this semester with our TAPS teachers, and they're pretty incredible teachers themselves, as I'm sure you were able to see. After a summative discussion with our elementary TAPS teachers and confirmation with our elementary principals, we are ready to make a recommendation for a two-to-one iPad deployment this fall in all 35 elementary buildings and two early childhood centers in the district. I'd like to introduce two of our TAPS teachers at the elementary level. Amanda Ady, who is a second-grade teacher at Fairview, she'll be moving to Millbrook next year, and Kristin Lester, who is a first-grade teacher, and both of those you saw in the video, and Kristin's a first-grade teacher at Green Springs. And while the middle and high school levels are not quite ready to make a recommendation, they want a little bit of additional time, first quarter next semester, to prove some additional devices and continue with the devices that they have. We also have two middle school teachers tonight who would like to share some of their experiences thus far and to kind of segue into "they will be back" scenario to kind of tell you what their thoughts are at the middle and high school level. And so, we have John Dunway, who is a math teacher, 7th grade math teacher at Santa Feige Trail, and Jason Papke, who is a science teacher, as you saw, at Prairie Trail. And also with us as well is Dr. Josh Anderson, who is a debate and forensics teacher at Lathas Northwest, who has been a crucial piece of this process for about a year now. And so, Amanda is going to share to begin with.
One of the things that was most amazing about this experience, I got to implement the two-to-one iPads this school year, and while it was an amazing experience overall, one of the most amazing things was seeing collaboration come alive in my classroom. We know that in our elementary classrooms, you know, learning is such a social process, so within that social process, this year, I got to see my kids problem-solve, which is always a challenge on many different levels, but with having to work together, they really had to put those problem-solving skills into play. They had to, lots of times with the new technology, they had to work together to figure out different ways they could work through a problem, especially in math, instead of just being able to answer a problem without really thinking through it or without having to verbalize how they solve those problems. That collaboration piece really pulls in them having to explain their thinking, which definitely takes it to the next level. So, that was such a crucial piece. Something else, something else that I saw too, that was just amazing for my kids, was I saw my reluctant learners really kind of becoming a little more confident, because they didn't have to work by themselves anymore. They had the chance to work with someone else, and lots of times, I was very careful with planning who their partners were. So, that student that maybe was a little bit higher than them was able to take them under their wing and kind of move them through the process. So, it's so great to see those reluctant learners move forward and become more confident. And I saw so many kids becoming more flexible in their thinking with collaboration, because no longer were they having to just accept that their thoughts were their own, and that's the way that it is. They had to really think about what their partner was saying, so it gave them, kind of goes back to problem-solving, but they really had to see things in a different way too and realize that their answer just wasn't right, you know what I mean? Second thing that I saw, or one of the things that I loved about the two-to-one beyond collaboration, which is just the most important, I think, was giving students the opportunity to experience something that they just haven't had the chance to experience before, especially in a Title I building, giving them the opportunity to come to school and to experience things that they wouldn't normally experience at home. The iPads were so crucial in that. I just really think back to Title I, you know, my job as a teacher is to make sure that my kids are coming to school, and what they're doing, what they're participating in in the classroom is preparing them for the real world, and I feel like two-to-one iPads did exactly that. Hi, and thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about differentiation and engagement within the classroom, and those kind of go hand-in-hand. I was fortunate enough to have the two-to-one ratio in my first-grade classroom as well, and one thing I noticed was I was able to utilize these during small-group reading instruction and small-group math instruction, and just really being able to target those kiddos where they're at in their learning. And that goes along also with engagement, just being able to engage them and providing some choice in how they learn and how they present their learning to other people. Some students might choose to do the sock puppet play that I talked about in the video, and then other students might not feel comfortable with that, but they can showcase their learning with a poplet by creating a web of things that they've learned. So, I do think it's crucial with the two-to-one ratio for iPads to provide that differentiation and the engagement for student learning.
There it is. I'm John Dunway, I teach at Santa Feige Trail. I've taught algebra for about 18 years, and most of the time, people stare blankly at me, just like you all are right now. And I'm fine with that, because I teach algebra. Imagine if you're studying proportions and you're just learning ratios, and instead of reading a blank problem on a page, you're asked to take a satellite photo of your house or your school. I teach at Santa Feige Trail, and you're looking at two satellite photos of Santa Fe Trail. The one on the right in the middle, that's our football field, and it's slightly cut off at the bottom, but the old line across is a line that I drew, and it told me the actual measure of that, and then I did the little finger squeeze and made that exactly an inch. From that, we could create our own scale problems. If that's one inch and I know that it's 60 meters, I could figure out, and I could teach kids, this is what a proportion is. This is what it really is to you and what it means in your life, because when we, as teachers, can take things and turn it to them in a way where they can touch it, feel it, and grasp it, they understand it, and they're confident about it. Like I've said, I've taught for 18 years from 7th grade up through junior college, and the issues with math are the same, but when it becomes real to them, and this is what the iPad has done in my classroom, the one on the left, that's the school, that's our building, and each one of those little points connected the final polygon, it tells us at the bottom, again, it's cut off on your screen, but it would tell me the area of the school. Think of all the things I could do with a student, you can see the geometry shapes in the top of the building right there, but think of the confidence that they'll have if they're finding that of their house, or let's say they moved in from another state, they could go there with a swipe of their fingers and see a house that they lived in and show that to me and tell me about it. I did a project this last nine weeks with my advanced class, where we were studying the quadratic formula when we received the iPads, so I challenged them to take an equation that we'd studied, that basically, if you're able to, if you have a projectile throne and you're able to time it and then figure out, know where it started from, its height and its ending height, you can calculate its maximum height and you can calculate how fast it was going upward. So, I challenged them to create something that showed this, and one of my favorite examples was a group of cheerleaders who are practicing, I think they're called stunts, where they throw and catch each other, and the challenge was videotape it and present it to me, preferably through a webpage, which they had the option of doing that, another option, so they videotaped themselves during a stunt. By the time they were done, they had calculated how high the girl went, how fast she went from the point, and they explained all of the math, step-by-step, through a blog, they embedded the video in the website, and it was an amazing project. And it's just an incredible time to be a teacher and an exciting time to be a student as well. Thanks for your consideration.
I don't have any exciting visuals to go with mine. I think one of the things as we approached this was looking at three things as a teacher of how can I use these iPads? We were fortunate to have the one-to-one, so we had a much greater ratio in terms of every kid being able to use a device, but I wanted to make my instruction more efficient, and I wanted to challenge students with higher-level learning in addition to trying to get them to take some ownership of their learning. And a couple of the ways we did that was, one, I talked to them, we did the Exit Ticket. It's an amazing way to create quick little quizzes that tell me exactly where students are. What have they learned? Did they do their homework? Are they prepared for a test? And then, to adjust what I'm doing in class to either specific topics that I may not have covered as well, or to specific students who may need just a little more attention, and the Exit Ticket gives me that immediate feedback and allows me to channel what I do to the kids that need it. There's also a quizzing software that we, a website we use called Kahoot, and it creates reviews for tests that becomes like a game show, and the kids use their iPad as a response device, and they're ranked, and they know who's right above them and how many points they have, and it creates this little competition within class that suddenly, the test review became a game to them, and challenging them to think of the answers quicker and to respond faster and to really think about the things they've learned, rather than just taking a piece of paper and blindly going through the book. And the kids loved it, and it was very effective in helping us focus before a test. Creating presentations, things like BlendSpace, which is a website, Edge of Creations, which is an interactive whiteboard that makes movies, so you can draw on the whiteboard and record what you're doing, it records voice, it records pictures, and creates a little video that I had kids create some different times. iMotion is another app that allows kids to do a stop-motion movie, where you literally take a picture and then you move something a little bit, and I had kids doing the systems of the body, showing how oxygen and carbon dioxide travel through the respiratory system and digestive system with food and whatever, and they created these movies that are sometimes 200, 300 pictures long, one picture at a time, like Gumby, if you remember the old Gumby and Poki days with claymation, and they loved it. I gave them the iPads and said, "Create anything you can think of," and they came up with some amazing videos of themselves just kind of horsing around, but it was just that freedom to go and create something on their own that was amazing. When it comes to specific science things, Vernier Wireless Probes, we have wireless hubs that will allow us to collect data from our tables while the lab stations are working, so you move away from the lab station to create a little cleaner situation and record everything on the iPads. We have Google apps that allow us to collaborate on homework assignments, on projects, so that they can even collaborate at home from their own computer. I think really just the creative side of this, of getting kids to take their learning and come up with how they want to learn it, and that's been amazing to see, because the kids really have great ideas, and so often, we miss those, because we just put things in front of them, and this was a great opportunity to let them design and learn in a manner that's good for them.
Well, these four teachers are just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to incredible teaching staff in the district, and we have been fortunate to have them involved in this process. We know that an iPad deployment comes with many other necessary components, and we can assure you, we've considered each of these. Our district curriculum, of course, is first. What do we need to ensure students need to learn, and how can technology assist with those particular tasks and goals? The security and storage of devices, and we've deployed and developed a plan for that for the fall. Our apps and choice of apps, we've been working with iPad pilots for a couple of semesters now, and have involved our curriculum coordinators and pilot teachers and these TAPS teachers to develop some recommended apps for each grade level, and we'll continue to develop those lists and directly correlate them to our curricular needs. You heard professional development mentioned many times this evening, and we have a plan for the critical component to ensure students are not only prepared, but ready to use the device effectively when they would receive them. And last, but most importantly, we believe this infusion of technology at the elementary level is exactly what we need to ensure, as we move into the next decade, a great and positive impact on students who were, as you saw on Jason's slide, what we really are teaching now, which is the last backpack generation, students that have, the world opened up to them rather than just a set of books like we were used to when we were growing up. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I'd like a little more discussion of what we are doing on the professional development. Tell us what we're...
We have some plans in place for, first of all, the teaching part of that in the month of September. Those four weeks on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights, we've negotiated with professional counsel to hold sessions from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're taking the devices and the training, three-hour training, to each individual building, and working with them on setting up the iPad from out-of-the-box to what needs to happen in the classroom as far as syncing apps and things like that. in the classroom as far as syncing apps and things like that. We also have, on October 20th, a district professional development day. That will be a half a day of infused iPad training, and we have many Apple trainers that would be coming onsite and providing that training for our staff and for approximately 1,000 staff at that time. We also have some Saturday trainings planned for the months of October and November and bringing some professional development trainers from the national level to incorporate some of the more creative side of the iPad application infusion, infusing that type of scenario in to the classroom versus just solely curricular-based training that might be on the October 20th. Next, summer conference in 2015. We have plans to bring in trainers for all three days and have that be heavily infused with iPad training for staff as well, and allowing some time for them to just get the experience working with the device as well. We have developed some iPad facilitators identified at each of the buildings who will be receiving some additional training and then going back and being the point person in their buildings for staff and services at the building level and things like that. So there's someone within each building to assist with troubleshooting and things.
Is there an accountability and an oversight to be sure that every teacher is putting effort to use them? And then also, you know, you shared great information here. How do we plan to share that throughout the district from school to school of this, you know, what, you know, they've already shared with us, to share that with other teachers that might be reluctant?
We have involved our principals heavily. Elementary principals are on board with this, and every single classroom will have a cube of iPads in their classroom, and they will be collaborating together as a grade level. And the expectation is, of course, that every single student would be involved and have the opportunity, and their teacher would be involved in that process.
And then how are we going to share district-wide?
Yeah, we have plans for our website to announce kind of what our initiative will be for the fall of the elementary, as well as to explain the next phases at the middle and high school level as well. And even as recently as last week at summer conference, we've begun to share the plans for elementary deployment through many of our sessions last week, all three days. These teachers, as well as the other teachers that have involved, had overflowing classrooms with teachers that were interested in what's this mean for me next year. And so that has been already begun, the information has begun to spread.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just excited about the evolution of everything and how things are working. I was kind of thinking, you know, probably back when Mr. Parker was there, he had slate and chalk, and now we've got... I do have a question, though. I do have a question, especially in the Title I schools. One of the questions I would have is, I'd just be kind of curious if you've got a feel for how many of the students actually have access to this at home? Or is this really, you mentioned that in the video, that this is really some of their first opportunity to use some of this technology. So is there, do we have an idea of the percentage of that, of the students that do have it at home and don't have access at home?
That's a great question, and that was one of the things that I wondered whenever I brought this into my classroom. I thought, am I going to have to spend hours of my valuable teaching time teaching them how to use this device? And what I experienced was that while students didn't have a lot of these devices at home, they've been to friends' houses, so they've had enough exposure somewhere along the line that when I put it into their hands, we just had to do some brief, basic use to be able to use them. But I did get the feel that most of these students didn't have these devices at home. So that's one of the things that we'd be most excited about presenting it to them.
Absolutely. Because they're going to need that exposure as they continue in life anyway.
Absolutely. That's our responsibility as a teacher, to get them ready for the real world.
And with that in mind, I know the proposal is two-to-one. One-to-one? Do you push it even further and say that's even better? And is it because of financial resources that we didn't make a recommendation like that?
You can stay here, Amanda, because you can add to this, but that was really one of the things that I was most excited about, that when we see districts around us going one-to-one at elementary and middle and high school levels, we didn't know what the recommendation would be. And our elementary teachers at our summative discussion said, "Don't, please don't give us a one-to-one. That's overkill. We also don't want, when we walk into an elementary classroom, every single student with an iPad in their hand and not interacting with other students in the classroom." And so, and Amanda talked to that point earlier, but they specifically asked for a two-to-one iPad implementation, which is sort of an affirmation of this whole process, because it's allowed us to really identify what that should look like at the elementary level and at half the cost to the district patrons.
I think that was the aspect that I was, I loved the presentation, and all the unique applications that you're using or methods. But the thing my three kids have struggled with most academically is anything involving others, working with them, because everybody is their own particular brand of leader, or they're lazy. And then you put all these people together, and they have these preconceived ideas, and man, learning to communicate and to give a little and to work a little harder if you need to, that's priceless. And that's what employers were hearing, and we employ, we need teamwork to be taught, and communication. So thank you for that. That's exciting.
I think it was also a nice confirmation from our elementary principals that they were very in favor of two-to-one. They were not in favor of going one-to-one at the elementary level. So, you know, we had lots of confirmation all the way along through this process, so we're very confident with this two-to-one deployment at the elementary level. When we come back with middle and high school, that may look different. But at the elementary, I think it was a strong consensus that two-to-one is the right decision.
Can I ask one more question while I'm talking? Can we take assessments on iPads yet?
We, you know, I don't know that this past assessment year was a good judge of anything to do with assessments. So we have been told that the full-size iPad, not the mini iPad, those are not big enough screens for assessment. But we have been told that, yes, the assessments will be available on an iPad. Was a little less successful on the iPad than on a desktop or PC this past year, but again, I'm not sure we can judge anything by that at this point. But it is our intent to have assessments available on the iPad. We also will be, we plan to leave the desktop computer lab at every elementary school. We think that's critical. The CLA program is there. They need that. We are also planning on leaving at least 30 laptops at every elementary school for the purpose of assessment, but also for some 4th and 5th grade writing that they might want to do. So we think there's still a need for that. You probably can address some of that, too, but, so we're going to leave some of that technology there. There's certainly a place for that. The rest of the iPads that are at the elementary levels, we will pull out. There's a large majority of those that were due for replacement last year. We held off on that replacement, knowing that this was coming, and so we didn't want to jump into replacing those and then say we were going to do laptops.
Said iPad, you must have meant laptops.
I meant laptops, I'm sorry.
And those are PC-based, right? They're not Apple?
They're PC-based, that's correct.
Elementary, okay.
Yes, that's correct. Is that it?
Since we have the middle school and high school people here, what are the issues we're facing as far as making a decision there? We don't have a recommendation.
A whole lot of people with different opinions about PC and Apple.
What are the different opinions?
I think the one thing I've noticed, and you can tell me if you agree, is the feedback that I've heard, most of all, is more in favor of a one-to-one at that level, or at least having that option. Now, we've talked about there are creative ways to do that. We're also, in addition to the iPads, where we have half of the people that are testing a tablet, which is, if you would, an iPad that's PC-based, that you would. And so, so we're kind of in disagreements about which one fits. And part of the issue is, you know, I only had my set of iPads for about one quarter, and that's not a lot of time to get a real good feel of it. And I kind of would have liked to have had a few weeks with the tablets, and then I could go back and say, well, you know, the apps that Apple have, and iMovie is a phenomenal resource, and that's kind of what I like. But I'd like to know what is the difference between that and the tablet, and is this worth the money of it? So it's questions like that when we had our last meeting, that was like, confidently, we would like a little more time just to see and answer those questions, because it's obviously a significant investment.
I think in the conversations I had, I think one of the big differences was you have grade levels that desire different things. 8th grade requires a little more writing of material, whereas 6th and 7th grade, a little bit less. And so my feeling was 6th and 7th grade iPads would be a much more suitable device, but the 8th grade teacher that has the Surface Tablets, he loved them, and he's an Apple guy. So he, and he really, I mean, he loved them because they do more writing and they come with a keyboard. And so that was a plus for him. I think his feeling was it does the same thing as a laptop, so then you've just got to decide what's worth it. But, and then I think the other question was subject matter. I don't know that language arts teachers would have a lot of use for an iPad, because it's so much writing and reading, and you could do all that on a laptop or another PC-based tablet. But for me in the science classroom, I could tell you right now what I want, because I use the iPad every single day, whether it was a web-based application or a free app that I found. I reached out to several companies and got free trials of things that would normally cost quite a bit. I got some eBooks, a whole set of 24 eBooks that we could try for a few days, and they were amazing. So for me, it was easy. But I think that's the two big things, is grade level, what do kids need? As they get older, they need to do more writing, which would lead more to somebody that has a keyboard, and then subject matter. You know, I don't know, like I said, there's a lot of language arts apps. There's a ton of math and science apps. And so that's, I think, where the weighing back and forth comes, is how do we divide it up? Are we choosing the same thing for all grade levels? Are all subject matters or all schools? That's what we're still kind of weighing.
Rita, speaking of that, is there an approval process for apps that the teachers bring into the classroom? And then I'd like to ask Mr. Anderson to use the remaining amount of time to share what the high school has. So he's got about two minutes.
We've gone through a lot of variations with apps, and there are millions of them out there. We've really involved our instructional resource teachers, our curriculum coordinators, our principals, all of these folks that have been involved with the proof-of-concept plan to really kind of vet out and narrow the scope of the apps down. And as we get further and further into this, I think Connie's planning on creating a website where we can put the best of the best out there. We are letting the buildings purchase their own apps and install their own apps. We feel like they know best what they need, rather than that be controlled by technology. Technology's trying to get out of that app business. There's a wide, wide world out there, and I think they've learned very rapidly how to really narrow the scope and just focus in on the best apps that they can find. And I think part of the professional development that you'll see over the next year is really to research and find those best apps. And we have a lot of people that have already been through this that can share a lot of information with us. So Connie, anything else you could say about apps?
One thing, too, that with the iPad, we are going to encourage our teachers to not purchase any apps for at least a quarter, because there's a lot of free apps. And the device itself is a production and creation tool, just with the native apps that are on the iPad. And so really encouraging that use of the iPad versus just using it as a tutorial and rote memory type of scenario with the interaction with the student and the device. It's going to be highly recommended that, again, nine weeks' time, use what's native on the iPad. We would work with Apple to put some of the apps that our teachers have already vetted out, and that is going to be part of the process before we ever receive the devices, that those would already be installed on that. And then from that point on, it's really not becoming, for lack of a better word, app-happy, which is the tendency when you first get an iPad, but to really learn what I can do with it without an app. And so we'll be using that as our basis for initial training in September.
You know, one of the elements that we also need to consider as we evaluate devices for the high school is the impact of BYOD. And we know that BYOD is coming to the all four high schools this fall. And with that in place, how does that impact our students' need for devices? And that's a critical factor in the decision for anything that involves a one-to-one. I don't, we don't know yet to the extent to which it would, how much it would impact that. But I think it's a necessary data point. With regard to the iPad versus a laptop, you know, our students really have to have two essential skills in the 21st century, the ability to consume information, and that consumption is much greater than textbooks that you and I had, and the ability to produce information. And at first glance, the iPad is very much a consumption machine. It's meant to deliver content to you, and laptops are much better for producing. And so we have curricula across the district that are meant to consume, and we have curricula that are meant to produce. And so we aren't sure yet where the balance is between those two essential concepts.
I just want to thank all of you guys for seizing the opportunity and making the most of it and sharing with us. Thank you.
My comment would be, I appreciate the fact that you're making your decision based on evidence. I think it's easy to make decisions about technology by emotion and excitement, and so I appreciate the time and effort you all are taking so that we're making wise choices and good use of our patrons' money. Thank you very much. All right. Doc on it, we didn't get to do any votes before our comfort break. It is time to take a comfort break, and we will return at 7:00.
Tonight, we recognize Community America Credit Union for their support of the Alatha Public Schools. For two consecutive years, they provided financial literacy classes to the families and staff at Head Start. A financial literacy specialist provides training and materials at no cost to the program. This information has been valued by the parents, and plans are already underway for the 2014-15 school year. The company focuses on the secondary level by hosting two student internships a year who receive detailed training in technology services. Our 21st century students have appreciated the mentoring by a business professional and are able to put classroom skills into action. Community America has annually provided speakers for the district's Soft Skills Seminar, where students hear from professionals in the business arena. Community America has also been an annual supporter of the Alatha Public Schools Foundation Golf Tournament and Annual Breakfast. This financial support allows staff to have grant dollars to implement innovative classroom projects and recognize classified staff for their accomplishments. This semester, the local Community America branch became an adoptive school partner with Briarwood Elementary, and they have supported a variety of activities at the school. I'd like to ask the following from Community America to come forward and be recognized: Sam Passer, Jason Armstrong, Angie Endicott, and Lisa Weaver. I'd also like to ask Briarwood Elementary Principal Sean Bohan, Sidney Von Felt from the Alatha Public Schools Foundation, and Kim Sill from the district's Head Start program to come forward to help thank Community America. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation to Community America Credit Union for financial and volunteer dedication to Alatha Public Schools. Thank you for all you do. Next, we'd like to recognize Ryan Dahl, a 2014 graduate of Alatha North High School. Ryan, if you could come forward, along with Principal David Morford. Ryan was named a 2014 U.S. Presidential Scholar, one of the most prestigious honors bestowed upon a graduating senior. He was one of 141 outstanding American high school seniors that have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, leadership, citizenship, service, and contribution to school and community. This is only the second time a student from the Alatha Public Schools has received this honor. Congratulations, Ryan, on this wonderful accomplishment. Ryan, is your family here tonight? If so, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Congratulations. Next, we'll recognize Greg Bixler from Alatha North High School. Greg, if you could come forward along with Principal David Morford. There he is. Greg recently received a perfect score on the ACT, an outstanding feat. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning a composite score of 36 varies from year to year, less than one-tenth of 1% of students who take the ACT earn this top score. He was one of nine Alatha Public Schools students to recently achieve this honor. Congratulations, Greg. And is your family here tonight? We'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Next, we'd like to recognize Colby Miller from Alatha East High School. Colby, if you could come forward along with Principal Bill Weber and Teacher Victor Doherty. Colby recently won the Kansas Oratorical Speech Contest. This contest is sponsored by the American Legion. He previously won the city and district competitions before heading to the state. His topic was "How My Passions Affect the World." Congratulations, Colby. And Colby, I know your family is here as well. We'd love for them to stand and be recognized. Congratulations. And next, we'd like to recognize Vanya Shivishankar, a seventh grade student at California Trail Middle School. Actually, we're going to wait a little bit for that one. We're actually going to go on to another student from California Trail, Chinmei Patil. Chinmei, if you could come forward along with Principal Connie Diebrich. Earlier this year, Chinmei won the State of Kansas Geography B and represented the district and the state in the National Geography B, which is sponsored by the National Geographic Society. He competed in the preliminary round and answered six out of the nine questions correctly, which is outstanding. Well done, Chinmei, and congratulations on your national recognition. And we'd love for your family to stand and be recognized as well. Next, we'd like to recognize the 21st Century Culinary Program for its recent state and national success. Would the team come forward along with Chef Mike Kristowski, Patty McWilliams, Alatha North Principal David Morford, and Executive Director of General Administration over high school programs, Eric Punzwick? Earlier this spring, the culinary arts team had great success at the state Pro Start Culinary Competition. Culinary team Epicurious, which includes Jordan Kamer, Jose Hernandez, Caitlin Hed, Melinda Herdy, and Rachel Corman, placed first at state and qualified to participate in the national competition. At the national Pro Start Invitational, they placed second in the nation, an outstanding Congratulations to all of you and we'd love for your families to stand and be recognized And next, we'd like to recognize the Alatha Northwest First Robotics Team. If you could come forward along with Instructor Darren Wooster and Principal Gwen Pos. The students just returned with several awards from the world championships. Here's a rundown of their awards. Safety Captain Samantha Byron won Safety Star of the Day in the Newton Division, which is an award picked for more than 3,000 students in the division. The team won the Underwriters Laboratory Industrial Safety Award, an overall team award for the team that has the strongest safety program. They also won the top award of the division, the Engineering Inspiration Award. The Engineering Inspiration Award is chosen for the team that inspires the next generation to get involved in science, technology, engineering, and math. This award qualifies a team for the 2015 World Championship as well as pays for their registration. Earlier this spring, at the regional competition, the team for the third year in a row won the Chairman's Award, beating 61 other teams from multiple states. Congratulations on all your successes this year. Please wave to her. There you go. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to ask Jason Herman, Alatha North High School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director, to come forward along with Principal David Morford. Jason has been named one of four District Athletic Directors of the Year by the Kansas Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. The award is voted on by all of the past presidents of the organization and recognizes honorees for their outstanding leadership. Congratulations. And next, we would like to recognize Indian Trail Middle School for a recent honor. Would Principal Becky Verbus, the entire Indian Trail team that's here, and Assistant Superintendent Erin Dugan, please come forward. Indian Trail Middle School was selected as one of five 2014 Kansas Association of Middle School Administrators Middle School of the Year finalists. Finalists receive a four-year banner which indicates their achievement and I'd like to say congratulations to your entire community. Congratulations. All right, and that concludes our recognitions this evening.
All right. We are at that time in our agenda when it is time for public comments. At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, we reserve limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individuals, staff members, or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. Okay, come on, somebody wants to talk to us. No one signed up prior? If there is no one here now who would like to speak to us, then we will move on. Next on our agenda is the Action Consent Agenda, items 5.01 through 5.05. I would entertain a motion or questions?
I'd move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.05 as presented. Second?
Was that Mr. Parker? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Mr. Parker to approve the Action Consent Agenda. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, we are ready to move on to actions, bids, contracts, and agreements. And as you can see, there are more than 10 and less than 21 items here on our agenda. That was my little math app for the evening. We can take them individually or group them unless someone has a question about any of them.
I'd like to just make a comment about 601 to 603 and 610.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
601 through 603 and 6.1.
So you would like to pull those for discussion separately, for voting separately?
Yeah, unless you want me, do you want me to just make a comment now?
If you'd like to make comments, that'd be fine.
I just wanted to, Dr. Banikowski, the textbook purchases, those are curriculum cycle purchases, right? That's not because of any changes to standards or curriculum statewide.
We have an actual curriculum cycle, textbook instructional material cycle, and that follows through. It used to be five years, a little more like seven years as finances have dictated that, but this is a similar process that we have been using historically for that under the direction of Lou Ann Hermrich and our curriculum content coordinators and as well as a lot of input from staff.
Great. And any parent or for that matter, any taxpayer, anybody that's interested can get a copy to look at at the Ed Center, is that correct?
Yes, we have those in the Education Center library.
Okay, thank you. And then the 6.1 Tricaster, I was going to make a comment that in the future, I'd love to see these as future action items, not just pushed through last minute. I can understand a field trip, but I think our public deserves the normal process of future action item, even though this one's a little bit unique because there's a kind of single provider of that item, but I just think it's good policy transparency.
Could you enlighten the rest of us on that?
On the Tricaster, this item is a technology piece that's more for, it's not really a video machine, but it's more for production and broadcast. And we just purchased one in April at the tech center and...
Approved the purchase.
Approved the purchase, thank you. In April, we approved the purchase and it got a little cloudy after that, but the vendor that we ended up with is the sole provider of the manufacturer of a Tricaster and they are matching the price for Alatha Northwest and that's fine, it's just the process still, this to me should never have been pushed through without being a future action item because school doesn't start till August, there's really no rationalness. Is there anything I don't know about that would rush it? It was just, I get it, I'm just saying, I think our public deserves transparency and we're transparent, but this could appear like we are not being.
And I appreciate that, Ms. Felter, in fairness to staff, the vendor who put the bid in at the end of the day, after we approved the bid, couldn't provide the item, so we had to go to an alternate vendor. And when we went to the alternate vendor, it would have been proper procedure to bring it back through board protocol, even though the price was the same, we still should have seen it as a second vendor. So the vendor, shame on the vendor that bid the item and then couldn't produce the item. I would imagine that we'll have a discussion with the vendor on that or probably already have had a discussion.
Madam President, I just have some comments about a couple items and 6.08. I just had a question is if this is for the Apple iPads for early childhood development programming, is this replacing existing laptops? Is that what we're doing with that? And it kind of expound on how this is going to improve, be an improvement for our staff in early childhood programming?
Sure. This is not replacing any laptops. These staff do not have mobile devices at all.
So this is an improvement?
It's a great improvement.
Okay.
Absolutely. I don't know if Ms. Fazulo is here, she was, yeah, there's Lady. She might be able to speak more on the particular staff that are getting these are really a lot of special education staff, speech and language pathologists. I got the opportunity a few months back to watch a speech language path working with a little guy on some language with the iPad that she had acquired a year back. It was phenomenal, but I'll let you speak to their abilities.
Right, these iPads are for the related services providers that work with the early childhood people, so...
They're pretty mobile?
They are.
Very mobile.
They're very mobile. Yes, yes, and so they're speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, our autism specialists, our behavior specialists, so they're the ones that are dealing with our youngest students and they need the mobility because they need to go classroom to classroom, school to school. They serve, a lot of these people serve the entire district.
And what have they used in the past?
Nothing.
Nothing?
They haven't had any access.
Paper and pay.
Yes, yes.
So this is, this is a well, $43,525, that's a really good investment. I imagine we're going to have some staff that's going to be excited about this?
They are, they don't, a lot of them don't know about this yet. They will be, we've had people piloting them throughout this school year with the pilot, so yes, they will be very excited.
And then I just had another one more on 6.18. That's the detention basin for at Madison Place Elementary. I just want to compliment staff on this. This is a real win-win when we can take dirt from one place and put it in another place and it's good for the kids, we give them a bigger playground and we don't have to spend any money other than moving the dirt. Thank you very much. And we're going to have to move the dirt anyway, someplace. We're going someplace, so we might as well use it for our own use, so a real win-win. And on the ball.
I've got a comment on 6.07. KSB fees, just something I guess gets under my skin a little bit is the fact that we have one vote, but yet we have a huge representation and we pay a lot of dues based on our enrollment. I would like us to somehow give some consideration to a different recommendation to KSB for ways of, you know, reflecting our involvement, more representative of how much we pay and how much our enrollment is, because I don't feel it's really fair treatment that we only have one vote in certain decisions. And like I said, I've got some ideas, I'd like to share them, but I just, I'm not going to, you know, I don't want to pull this out, I'm in favor of it. I've used their resources a lot, so, but I just, I think that needs to have some consideration.
Could I just make a comment on that? I serve as the regional vice president on the Board of Directors at KSB and this is actually a topic that comes up on a regular basis and I do think it's something they struggle with. And the way KSB's set up, they're really, they're kind of two different ways you vote. So there's the delegate assembly, which is what your concern is, where every district has one vote, if they've got 200 kids or if they've got 2,000 kids or if they've got 30,000 kids. But on the Board of Directors, we hold one position. So, 15, yeah, so I think they've worked to strike some kind of a balance in representation so that the needs of the minority are still represented, but I don't know if I agree with you, but I, there's definitely, you're not alone in feeling that way and it's something that I think KSB continues to try to deal with.
I guess I'd like to hear more from them on what their thoughts are and what their plans are and at some point, maybe we need to let our dollars vote for it. plans are, and at some point, maybe we need to let our dollars vote for it. Moving on, I'd like to see six thirteen through, what, six seventeen pulled, and then also six twenty. The reason I'd like to see them pulled for a separate vote?
For a separate vote.
Is, there's a lot of stuff going on, I just wanna make sure the public's aware of what's going on there, and for us to just accept it as a thing, so...
So thirteen through seventeen?
Yes.
And?
And then six twenty.
And then twenty, all right.
I would move for approval of six point oh one through six point one two, also to include six point one eight and six point one nine.
Correct, second?
Go ahead. So, Mr. Parker and Ms. Felter, is that correct?
Sure.
All right. All right, have a motion, miss him?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Poland, you'd like to take each of these now individually?
Well, I guess, I guess what I would maybe just ask Greg to sort of review, I think that, I'm guessing we have representatives from the companies here, that maybe some of the successful bidders, allow them the time to introduce it, just review it, and also possibly tell us where the money is coming from, which bond issue?
For each, you want him to list, go through each one?
Yeah, just real quick, nothing that elaborate.
You know, I can't say hello in less than fifteen minutes, so, you may not know what you've asked for here. Six thirteen, architectural and engineering fees for middle school renovations, the two thousand thirteen bond issue included renovations at eight of the nine middle schools, those vary, but they do sort of fit into a group, three of them are getting a second wood floor gymnasium, they were all from the same floor plan, three, four more sort of major renovations with an addition of a third music room, a lot of aging facilities worked at the middle schools, carpet, lights, paint, flooring, renovating some science labs that are thirty-five or forty years old, those kind of things. We submitted RFPs to architects and construction managers, the recommended architect for all eight projects is Hollis and Miller, the recommended construction manager for all eight projects is Turner Construction Company, those are all two thousand thirteen bond funds.
And that work will be completed when?
The work really won't start until spring of next year, it'll continue on through the summer and likely on into the fall of next year, this was sort of elementary school year and summer, next year is sort of middle school year and summer, architects and the construction managers will be sort of reviewing, walking through the buildings, finalizing scope of work this summer, so that we can meet with principals in the fall when they come back, hope to have design drawings out to bid by Christmas, and then start work in the spring when the weather allows, and then on through the summer, and likely some work then on into the fall, just to get it finished. Trade bids for the elementary renovations, this is just more of the trade bids, these happen to be for Scarborough, Walnut Grove, Black Bob, this is just more of the elementary school security at the front door projects, these also happen to be classrooms without doors, schools, where we're also adding new walls and new doors in the classrooms and modifying the media center. Expect that work to be usable by the time school starts, but likely still some work and possibly using a secondary entrance when school starts, two thousand thirteen bond funds. This demolition bid at Northview is just a part of the construction at Northview, this was some demolition work that has to go along with the trade bids you had approved earlier. And then, I think, I'm a little lost, nineteen is the Northview...
Seventeen.
Seventeen was demolition of the metal building at Mill Creek, as we all remember, we started working in phases to sort of clean up Mill Creek, step one, phase one, was demolishing the metal building, these were the bids for demolition of the metal buildings, quite a range of bids, this is also coming from two thousand thirteen bond funds, and quite a range, low bidder is very happy with his bid and ready to start work.
And then twenty?
Twenty.
That's just that little project.
Yeah.
Twenty is the recommendation for a construction manager for the high school project, High School Five, little project going on over here on the West Side Town, we're getting to start on. Went through a very elaborate, I thought a very detailed interview and review process, arrived with interviews with four very qualified, very successful construction managers, it was a difficult decision on who to select, but the staff is recommending a contract with McCown Gordon to be the construction manager for that project, I think they'll be a valuable team member, will fit very well with the Hollis and Miller SHW team, fit very well with the Stewart District team, and that's our recommendation, and that was well under, well under the funds we had allocated for it, two thousand thirteen.
Any rest on any some companies here?
There are. Would you like to have them come forward and introduce themselves?
Who are they from, which company?
McCown Gordon.
Okay.
We talked about a number of different companies.
I'm sorry, I thought you asked, Hollis and Miller and Turner, you think you all know those guys, these are representatives from McCown Gordon.
Okay.
Why don't you introduce them? They're here.
I'm the lead chair of that partner, and she's about thirty-five years old, so, we're thrilled to be recommended to service. Chris Hassel, project executive of McCown Gordon, Alachra residence, and Alachra High School, grand, Alachra South, ninety-two. Very excited to be part of the project, and one of the things we're doing, and thank you for that opportunity.
Thanks for being here.
Sure. Yep.
So, Mr. Poland, can we?
I'd recommend, moved, recommend approving items six point one three through six point one seven, and then also six point two zero.
Okay.
Second?
Brent? Motion by Mr. Parker, excuse me, by Mr. Poland, I just wrote down the wrong name, by Mr. Poland, and a second by Mr. McKeon to approve six point one three through six point one seven and six point two oh, miss him?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right, we are going to move on then to item seven dot zero one, we will not be taking action on this item tonight, but it is our opportunity to have some discussion about insurance policy renewal for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
Dr. Daniels, I'd just like to mention to board members that sometimes these insurance companies just don't respond very quickly to their renewals, so we just, we're able to get the information, because our policy renews July first, correct, Mr. Charlesworth? Is that correct?
Our policies renew July first, that's correct.
Right, so we just were able to get this information and be able to have the insurance committee meeting this past Tuesday, and so the board members do not, have not had an opportunity to review that in detail, so this is a time to ask questions and review it, and then we can take action on it at our special meeting on June twenty-fifth, that's why it's on the agenda, not as a future action item, because it, I guess we could consider it a future action item this evening, and then we'll vote on it on the twenty-fifth, just simply because it wasn't, we didn't get the information from the carriers until just recently.
That's correct, I think the information was a, just a FYI, last month, no information was provided, but that is correct, so, I'm just gonna walk through the key points real quickly, if you would please, several things in play right here.
Mr. Charlesworth, for the benefit of the viewing audience and the public, would you just kind of introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, thank you so much, I'm feeling at home here.
And what you do and why you're here.
Okay, my name is Bob Charlesworth, I'm a part owner of Charlesworth and Associates in Over Park, Kansas, we're an independent consulting firm, we're not licensed to sell insurance, the district has hired us, I think since, I'm gonna age myself, since nineteen ninety-four, I think, to kind of oversee the insurance program, the processes, help understand how we've moved to self-funding in some areas, how we've moved to some large retention programs that we're gonna talk about tonight, and then I also assist in the RFP process when we look for alternatives, like we did last year, and we select a program through Thomas McGee, and then we also have a segment apart in our workers' comp, which we've carved out, it's kind of a separate animal, if you will, but our firm has been privileged to work with this, we work with forty-plus public entities in Kansas, Missouri, and Nebraska, so this is pretty much my role here, so, not a fixture, but I am here, and I, all the blame is on the insurance companies, not me, so, I'm gonna walk through a few things real quick, on the workers' compensation is the first piece that we have through here, and years ago, we did some studies and some reviews, and we've actually, what we call self-funded the workers' compensation program, to go out and buy this, we did the numbers, it'd be about one million sixty thousand dollars a year, to go out and write a check for this every year, so what we've done, we've essentially set it up in, where we hired an independent third-party administrator, in this case, Thomas McGee, which is in Kansas City, Missouri, to actually administrate the claims, from that, we also buy stop-loss protection, and that is what you see here, which is through Safety National, bottom line is, any one accident, the worst-case scenario for the district, and this is a big number, is four hundred thousand dollars, so that's either one or multiple. The overall part of that, we funded that very well every year, our claims have been extremely well this year, last year, we usually have one hiccup about every four years, that's about statistically correct, doing much better this year, we have an extremely active safety program, I go to those meetings every month that I can, Denise Carpenter heads that up, and you have several representatives that do that, they're trying to get employees back to work, there's light-duty programs, everything we can to get the employee back to work, and that's the goal of it, and it's been working quite well. That premium actually is going up a little bit, up a little bit, last year, we were able to strike a deal, if you will, with Safety National, to have a second year not to increase rate a five percent, they've lived up to their bargain, the rate is actually, the premium is up seven percent because payroll estimates have really gone up a little bit, but the rate has stayed at that five percent level, and so that's a good positive thing that we saw, your first question to me says, well, can we cut a deal for next year, and the answer is no, we can't, but next year, we'll try and get another two-year deal going as well, five percent's a very good rate from the self-funded clients that we see right now, so I'm very pleased with that. The next item is a third-party administrator, again, this is...
Mr. Charlesworth, I think it's really important there, we talk about reserves, because that's a cash balance that we carry, and a lot of people look at our cash balances and say, you have that big number, but that's what we use to pay for work comp claims, Mr. Hutcherson, how much is in that fund?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, actuarially, it should be higher than that.
Actuarially, it should be higher than that.
Correct.
But I'm not unhappy where it's at.
I understand that, and we've discussed that in years past, so it's not uncomfortable, but if we were an insurance company, it would have to be higher than that.
I think it would.
Okay.
And what the beauty of Thomas McGee, they actually give us an idea of what our reserves would be, and so therefore, John's got a better handle of how much money really needs to be in there that could be encumbered.
Yeah, the whole point of that discussion is, when we come to budget and we look at our cash reserves, and we see that nine hundred thousand here, it's easy for us, so we could take that and spend it for teacher's salary or other operating things, and we just can't do that, it has to stay there.
I'd like to see you do that, but I'd rather you didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Because we have a financial obligation to this program, and the district is addressing that.
Mr. Charlesworth, one other thing with this, again, just, and you may have said this in the beginning, if we didn't self-insure, what would we be paying for a premium for...
One million sixty thousand dollars.
A year?
A year.
Okay, so that's...
So if you look at our...
There's your savings there, we've got nine hundred thousand reserve, but we're saving a million dollar, actually out expense at that point.
Yeah, that's every year.
It's every year.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you look at, I don't have the numbers, eighty-one thousand plus the third-party administrator, which is seventy-one, that's a one fifty about, plus our claims, so if our claims, even if they were four hundred thousand dollars, we're five hundred fifty thousand versus a million dollars, so I think the district's doing quite well.
Yes.
But one, you know, our past doesn't always predict the future, but the law of large numbers is in our favor in this. The next item is third-party administrator fees, we have to pay somebody to administrate those, the stop-loss carrier has to have a comfort level with somebody that handles your claims, their rates are going up three percent, that's pretty much along the Consumer Price Index, we're very comfortable with that, we've actually marketed some third-party administrator programs for public entities the last year or two, their rates are competitive, so I'm very comfortable with that one. And I will give them kudos here, they do a really nice job of coordinating with the district, and make sure employees know where to go, what their benefits are, and try and get them back to work. Next item is kind of a package program here, it's a property program, we're gonna talk about that first, as you'll notice, there's a few things that are gonna maybe shock you a little bit, the total building content values that we insure has gone up about seven percent, and you think, what happened? Well, we had a lot of stuff on builder's risks that we've actually rolled into the policy, and so that coupled with more educational technology, which is a big key here for the district, that's been rolled in, so if you take a three percent average value increase, plus all the stuff you've added, that's about seven percent overall, so we actually have about eight hundred million dollars for some insured property here.
So when you're saying we're adding, is it the Tech Center and the elementary?
Tech Center, it's...
Those are the new buildings now, they're a part of this.
And even additions to, additions that we've added.
That went from seven hundred forty-four million to seven hundred ninety-six million.
That's correct. Now, what we do, the insurance company says, that's fine, we're gonna charge a rate on that, but we'll lower the rate if you put what they call a loss limit on it, and last year, we made the recommendation, you all did this, the most the policy will pay is five hundred million dollars in any one occurrence, so we don't insure the, we insure the full eight hundred million, but the worst case is five hundred million for the insurance company, we've done studies, we've done reviews, and I think I shared it with you all last year, we did a little overview of a swath path of the tornado and Joplin, and kind of put your numbers in here, and it's about three fifty-five is kind of the worst case that we saw, we were, so we increased it from four hundred million to five hundred million last year, that's what you all did, we concur with that. As you can see here, the rate is not changing at all, obviously, the premium goes up because the values went up, but the rate has stayed the same, that's a very good thing. One of the issues we've had in Midwest and in Kansas particularly, insurance companies, I guess, are finding out what Kansas is like, we have wind and we have hail, I drove through wind and hail this morning going down Emporia, but what they have here, the travelers, your insurance company says there's a five hundred thousand dollar deductible for wind and hail, hundred thousand for all other perils, fire, et cetera, and so what we said, well, we'd like to buy that down to a hundred thousand dollars, and travelers wanted like eighty-something thousand dollars to do that, and says, no, 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 it's too much, but Lloyd's did come back, says, we will sell you a policy to buy down that deductible, so it's a four hundred thousand dollar policy is what it is, to pay for your deductible, and as you can see, that rate stayed the same, the premium stayed the same, so collectively, the property premium is up six point four or five percent, with all those pieces put together, so, I'm quite pleased with it.
That's at thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
That is correct.
We discussed that last year, so basically, for thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, we're buying four hundred thousand dollars worth of coverage.
That's correct.
We could pass, we could skip that and save thirty-five thousand dollars, but our wind and hail deductible is five hundred and shit of a hundred.
That's correct, and as soon as I say something like that, you're gonna have it tomorrow, and I'm gonna be out of a job, so...
Happy after July first.
That's right.
So, so I think that would be something that we would wanna consider, again, staying with the thirty-five five premium for the four hundred thousand.
That would be my recommendation, yes, to continue as we've set it up that way.
About twelve years of coverage.
Yeah, one of these days, I'm gonna be right, Mr. Parker, and then they're gonna drop that deductible back down.
So...
Yeah. The next item is the general liability policy, it's all our liability policies, includes your school board, chairs and admissions policies, things that are filed in federal court, your auto liability, use of all your vehicles, the general liability, slipping balls, it has some abuse, sexual abuse coverage in there, and as you can see, the rate stayed, went up just a hair, the values, or the enrollment obviously has increased, and that's how they base their premium, is based on your enrollment, so when enrollment increases, premium increases, it's up one point six percent, the important thing to notice here, if you haven't known me long enough, or haven't been here long enough, we moved from essentially a first-dollar small deductible-type liability program, paid a lot of money for it, but through our risk management programs, and through your risk management, risk management and management programs, we've been able to assume more of that first-dollar risk, so we have a two hundred thousand dollar deductible, that's sizable, that's not uncommon to see, one of the benefits of what we call, it's called a self-insured retention, you can call it a deductible, but technically, it's a little different, but we can actually, you can actually pick your counsel, if you have a deductible, usually an insurance company picks your counsel, well, we kind of like to do that ourselves, especially if we have two hundred thousand dollars on the line, we haven't had any claims go over that, so we think it's good risk management policy to save the premium and keep a risk management fund, and we do have a special liability expense fund here. have a special liability expense fund here to pay for liability issues. We'll go on, kind of like the workers' comp, whenever we have liability claims, and even property claims, we like the ability to work with Thomas McGee. They have an individual down there named Joe Thurston, who is very good at claims adjusting. And he gives you real good answers as to how you ought to address a claim, how you ought to settle a claim. And we pay them a separate fee for that. The, the rates have gone up a little bit. Collectively, it's about $8,760 a year. Quite candidly, probably the best bang for the buck you're gonna get. They don't handle a lot of claims, and when they do, they're really helpful to have involved. And our, and our insurance carrier likes this idea as well, because they have actually somebody that's in the claims management business looking at your claims. So that's positive. The other two items are crime, employee dishonesty. We never want to talk about that, but obviously, we have issues regarding that. Forgery and alterations of documents, that's covered there as well. That premium did go up just a little bit from $57.29 to $5,903 a year. That covers everybody in the district as far as employees go. So that's a, I think that's a very good rate.
Disappointed that, that does not cover, that covers staff and does not cover the PTOs.
It does not cover PTOs. PTOs are not under control of the-
They, they control their own destiny as far as-
The information is given to the PTOs, I think, every year regarding programs that they can purchase on their own.
Right.
It's very price competitive.
Unfortunately, if that happens to PTOs, it's, it is a reflection on the district and a reflection on us and a reflection on our staff. But they are independent and separate organizations, which we have no control over, other than maybe providing them some space.
Space, exactly. You're correct, Mr. Parker.
Okay. I think that's important for the public to know that.
This, this might be unrelated, but if we were to have PTAs instead of PTOs, would that be a different-
There's no difference. As far as the structure is set up and the programs that are available to them, and we've given that information out, it's the same. It's a PTO or PTA, doesn't matter. I know there's a difference, but for, to them, it's all about the number of students and what their-
Okay.
Just covers all the schools and all their activity funds and-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because those are not district funds. Those are, they're funds. So. And the last item on this one is the fiduciary liability. This is kind of a little piece, but to me, it's an important piece. Put it in several years ago. It's with Chubb Insurance Company. In the event that you all, you actually pick your 453, 457, 403B carriers, and as such, could, you could be brought in as a fiduciary of those plans, even though you don't control the monies, but you do collect them and send them on to those carriers. Mr. McKeon, you're probably aware of 403Bs and 457 plans. But since we, we do this, we actually buy this policy to protect the, the district should allegations ever come down.
Mr. Charles, I'd like to talk just a minute about cyber liability.
Yes.
Becoming a big issue.
Yes.
And obviously, we have a lot of records, student records, health records, a lot of personal data, and we, and Ms. Lanz, I'd like to ask you to address this as well, as long as we're on this issue. I understand that our security, our firewall is very, very secure, and we're pretty confident that we are not in, in any jeopardy of being hacked. Rita?
We do absolutely everything we can to prevent that. Can I stand here and say that there is 100% no chance? No, I can't say that.
All right. So in that regard, I've, I've asked Mr. Charlesworth if he would prepare a proposal for us to look at cyber liability, because again, if we're hacked and we lose a lot of records, that's expensive, because we, there's some things that we have to do under the law to notify people and to protect their identity, and some things that we'd have to do on our own staff, which is gonna cost us money and time, as well as a counter, a suit from, from someone whose liability, identity was stolen, and somehow that's jeopardized in their own personal lives. So Mr. Charlesworth is gonna prepare a proposal for us to look at in regards to cyber liability, so we would have insurance if we were ever hacked, that would protect us from those expenses, so.
Yeah.
In addition to the cost we're talking here.
This would be, this is, this not, it's not in this proposal. It's something that we'd have to, to look at, and Mr. Charlesworth's gonna give us a quote on it.
It's gonna get really interesting to see. We've actually provided a sample application. And I know Rita's just snowed getting everything put together, bless her heart. But based on those responses, I think we'll be able to at least get a good indication about what it may cost. I work with several state retirement systems, and it's real expensive. But, you know, understanding what, what the policy would provide and how much the cost is to transfer that risk, I think we need to know. Some of these other entities don't buy it. And the reason they don't buy it, they have protocols in place regarding notifications, regarding setting up experience, regarding other things that are, that are necessary. So they've done the risk management of it. And the board has said, this is how we're going to address it. We're not gonna buy an insurance policy for it. But they're bigger than you. I think it's important, at least for you, to see that and be able to evaluate that. And that way, if it ever does happen, at least we've addressed it. Whether we handle it, self-insure it, or whether we transfer that risk, that's something we need to determine. So that's the process that we're gonna go through right now.
I think that's extremely important. Are you seeing other districts around the, the country incorporate?
They're starting to look at them. The reason is, the prices have finally come down, because the policies have actually been designed to address the true risk. And a lot of it's the notification. If, if something happens, you have to send those specific notifications out to everybody, and that costs money. That has to be coordinated. And so that's probably the, the upfront cost. It's the worst. We have one group that actually has set up a deal with one of the rating companies to, I won't say which one on public, because I'm not sure I can do that, but where you can go on and says, if, you know, we send out 10,000 letters, 500 people say, I want that monitoring coverage for a year, well, we'll pay it. And it's, what is it, $12 a month per person, or $7, whatever you can cut a deal for. And so it's, that's part of our fund. We're gonna pay it out of our special liability fund. We're not gonna buy an insurance policy for it. But if you buy an insurance policy, they'll pay that. They'll set that up for you. And they'll take that, that risk transfer for you. I think it's something to look at. Policies are getting better. The pricing is getting more competitive. And I think the need needs to be addressed.
Madam President, bottom line here is $86,000 additional premium this year over last year.
That's correct.
And I, I'm comfortable recommending the package as part of the committee. And if, if the board would like to take action, that's up the board, or we can wait till the 25th. Our renewal date is July 1st.
July 1st.
Be all right if we took action on June 25th?
That's, it's perfectly fine. It's, they're renewals of current policies. You don't have to worry about loss limitation letters or anything like that. It's, it's whatever y'all would like to do.
Are we gonna know anything, any more than we do now?
Nope.
No, sir.
I say move.
Thank you. I'd move for approval of the insurance package as presented this evening by Mr. Charlesworth.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. McKeon to approve our general insurance policy renewal.
Ms. Higgin?
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. I'd just like to comment, Mr. Charlesworth, on your work and bringing a very complex issue and making it, digesting it down, so we can understand it and get to it quickly, and it all makes good sense.
I appreciate being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let me ask a clarifying question. The cyber piece, would it be an additional vote then later?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that'd be second action item. We haven't seen anything on that yet.
Awesome. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. 7.02 is to set the date and time for the public hearing and approved notice of hearing on amending the general and capers fund budgets for 2013-14. Does anyone need an update on that?
I move to set June 25th, 2014, 6:00 PM as the date and time for a public hearing on amending the 2013-2014 budget and to approve a notice of hearing to hold said public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Pollan to set the date and time for our next public hearing. Ms. Higgin?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Item 7.03 is our need to approve a new date and time for our July Board of Education organizational meeting. And that would be on July 10th, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to set July 10th, 2014, 6:00 PM as the new date and time for the 2014-2015 Board of Education organizational meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeon and a second by Ms. Felter to approve July 10th, 2014 as the new date and time for our 2014-15 Board of Education organizational meeting.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right. We are now at future action items, 8.01 through 8.14. This is your opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments that you would like to do so. Your comment, Les. All right. We have 9.01 and 9.02, which are information, written information meetings. Any questions or comments there? Then let's move on to 10.01, which is board member topics for discussion. Does anyone here have a topic of discussion?
Some topic, just a comment.
Okay.
I think we need a little bit of review on the subliminal messaging in some of our presentations. The iPad presentation tonight, I don't know if you noticed, the only Jayhawk we saw was prominently displayed on a student. The only purple I saw was, had his back turned to the audience. So I think there's subliminal messaging there, and I think we need a little bit of review of that.
So what you're saying-
I detect some serious bias here, Mr. Pollan.
So, Mr. Pollan, what you're saying is there should be no purple incorporated into these presentations. Is that correct?
I just think there's, it's a valuable tool. It's being used.
We're gonna go down that route, then we need to get our math teachers to figure out how to put grass in the middle of our athletic fields, not just measure them.
All right. Now we're being silly. Any other comments?
No, sorry.
That's okay. No. A little humor is always good. If there are no board member topics for discussion, then Dr. Barry, you are on.
Just a couple of comments tonight. A couple of other things I was gonna mention have already been shared, so I'll slip over those. You know, even though it is summer right now, there are some people in the community that still think this building is shut down, that administrators are out in shorts and flip-flops during the day doing other things. But that is absolutely not the case. Summertime is actually very busy for the education center, and principals still on duty. But one thing that happened last week, Jan Heinen and other staff in teaching and learning and others that assisted her pulled off a wonderful summer conference again at Alatha Northwest. We had 1,737 people register to attend that, which is up 200 over last year. Again, a lot of excitement by our staff. We have outside members come as well from across the state. And so, again, an outstanding conference. When we have these national presenters come in, they just can't believe that it's a local school district pulling us off. So again, kudos to staff for a wonderful start to the summer by providing a lot of new learning for staff. The second thing then this week that continues to happen is summer school is underway. And again, great enrollment and great learning already going on. We have about 1,600 kids in early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school that are attending our summer school programs. Again, very beneficial to our students to continue this over the summer. You've heard a little bit from Greg as he went through some of the trade bids and, and the action items tonight. But again, summer projects are underway all across our community. 22 elementary schools being touched. Again, some are the safety and security pinch points. Others are aging facilities. We mentioned the, the Playground Basin project that we wanted to have mentioned tonight, but there's an awful lot going on, including at our complexes, so that's pretty exciting. Last thing I want to mention, a couple of dates. June 10th next week is the Kansas Association of School Boards advocacy tour. We are once again hosting one of those meetings. It's preceded a little bit earlier in the day by a legal clinic. Then there'll be the advocacy tour, and then I believe even some candidate meetings at the end of that. So again, if that works on your calendar, I'd love to see you here. And then June 25th is our closeout meeting, where we close out the fiscal year. That gives business and finance staff just a couple more days to officially close it out. But we ask for some motions to make those transfers and, and final actions that we need to close out the school year. At that meeting then, on June 25th, it won't be just closeout, because we're gonna ask you that night to take action on the iPad initiative that you heard tonight, so that we can get those ordered in a timely fashion and have them here for the start of school. We were also gonna potentially deal with insurance, but you took care of that tonight as well. So again, still a lot happening for us in the summertime, and we've gotten off to a good start.
Any questions for Dr. Barry?
Dr. Barry, did you want me to mention about the leasing option for the laptops?
No. Yes, we did want to do that.
I took a risk.
The iPad initiative, that is a future action item, and so we will deal with it at the June 25th meeting. One of the things that we have looked at, and John and staff have done some work on, is to give you the option, and we at least wanted to mention it tonight, and thank you for reminding me, that we might look at leasing. That's a recommendation to lease instead of buy, and John will tell why.
Certainly. As Dr. Barry said, Apple has approached us, said they have a leasing option rather than outright buying the laptops, excuse me, the iPads. Those in the financial world know there's a, there's a calculation that you go through to determine, is it more economical to lease or outright purchase? The interest rate is so attractive that they're offering, actually, when we met as a finance committee, it was at 0.85%. Now it's down to 0.39%, that if you run the calculations, really, we would net over $300,000 savings if we went through the lease. Not only do we garner savings, we preserve those bond funds for those later initiatives that you did not, that are still under study that we heard from the middle school and high school. Now, the other side of that coin is, in order to do that, it's a bottom, a lease payment of about $1.4 million. So in your mind, you have to think about, that's about a mill of our capital outlay levy. And we're heading into budget season, and we've begun discussions about how I believe that the capital outlay levy with the new legislation, we should be able to keep that levy at its maximum of eight mills for, for years to come. And we'll get into those discussions more. But I just want to let you know, the agenda item reads that it's a purchase, but the recommendation will probably come forward as, as a leasing option, and we'll get into how that works with our overall levy.
Will you also give us an idea of how that works, if we end up extending the life of those devices?
It's a $1 buyout. If, often when you get into a, a computer lease, it's similar to your copiers. You, it's sort of a staged replacement upon obsolescence. About every four years, if you can maintain that revenue stream, you are able to swap them. You really don't take possession at $1. You exchange them in for, for new ones, and now you're at another four years, but you have that kind of consistent million-four, million-five payment every year to ensure you have that coverage at the elementary level. But in theory, if we said we don't want to do that any longer, we don't want to, we don't want to lease any additional ones, we take possession of all the units at a $1 buyout per unit at the end of four years.
Okay.
And is there a warranty that is tagged along with that?
I'm sorry?
A warranty that's tagged along with that?
There, actually, there is. Thank you for reminding me. There, there are, there's warranty, but there's also maintenance agreements that are offered. I believe the recommendation is going to be really to self-insure, buy extra units. Economically, at our size, it makes more sense to have additional units versus pay the $600,000 for coverage of, of our purchase.
So, John, will you be able to provide us with like a side-by-side lease versus purchase in, in, in a written form?
I could provide, definitely provide you the calculation. It basically yields, here's the plus or minus. It's not really a side-by-side, but I'd be happy to, to provide you so you see the assumptions.
Thank you. All right. We need executive session, 10 minutes. Okay, Dr. Barry, how much do you have time?
30.
30. So we need 40 minutes.
I'd move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employer, employee negotiations. And if the board return to the regular meeting at 8:40 or 45?
Let's say 45.
8:45 PM in this room. Executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed, and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Mr. Parker to adjourn to executive session. Ms. Higgin?
Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker.
Oh, yes.[1766.33]